Good evening and welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for June the 22nd, 2015. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please rise. And then please remain standing for the invocation by Father Denny Heniman, St. Mary's Church, 2302 Crawford Street.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Loving God, we give you thanks for giving us yet another evening to serve you and serving our community. Guide the members of this council with a spirit of understanding which might lead them to their best judgment. We live in a world of human failure and broken promises. May they be tolerant of the faults of others because they are aware of their own shortcomings. Bless all with a quiet respect for the diversity of opinions to be found here. Through honest dialogue and compassionate listening, may your servants search all the avenues open to them to meet tonight's challenges with integrity and justice. May all that is done be for your greater honor and glory. Amen.
Thank you, Father Denny. Item number two, Sabrina, could you please call roll?
Mr. Carmichael.
Here.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Modri.
Here.
Mrs. Blood.
Present.
Item 2A, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act posted in the entry to the council chambers. Item three, approval of minutes and advisory committee reports. 3A, approval of agenda. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item B, approval of consent agenda. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 3C then is under consent. Item four is under consent. We are now on item five, special presentation. 5A, discussion, prohibit parking along Bellevue Boulevard to address the line of sight issue at the intersection of Chapit Drive and Bellevue Boulevard. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item? Please come forward if you could state your name and sign in, please.
Is it okay to put this lid down?
Yes, I think so.
Sure. Kathleen Caldwell. So I was asked to boil down our issue to one thing. I did send a packet of photos in advance. If you look at them, there are multiple pictures where you can see that one cannot see when turning from Chapit Drive onto Bellevue Boulevard. So that's our basic issue. If what you think you can see there is 25 feet, if a car is traveling 25 miles per hour there, you have .682 seconds to respond to that oncoming vehicle once it passes the car that's parked on Bellevue Boulevard. If what you believe is that you can see 50 feet, you have 1.363 seconds to respond. I would estimate that it's closer to 25 feet and is a response time that I'm 100% certain that my children don't have and that I think is difficult for most probably trained drivers to achieve, and that's why I believe it's unsafe. And then just to kind of summarize, we didn't get here with just kind of one problem. When that house took out building permits on July 10th and 15th of 2013 to modify their garage into living space, there was no inspection after those, which would have, to my understanding of zoning ordinances, required compliance with the sidewalk because they added to the square footage of their home. They also moved their mailbox into the site triangle. We were told by the police that they wouldn't enforce the site triangle because it was, I believe the word that was used was subjective, that people sort of estimate how far they are and so they would not actively enforce that. There's no enforcement of the sidewalk space, so on my house, because on the easement I have a sidewalk, you would enforce my not parking over that portion of my property, but that would not be enforced on Bellevue Boulevard where there are no sidewalks as relayed to us by the police. They're not required to license all the vehicles that they have parked on their driveway, which according to the city website is a requirement. And when we met with Lieutenant Dargy and Tammy Palm, they made several agreements to pursue returning the mailbox to where it had been and limiting work materials in the driveway and requiring registration of the trailers that were there, which have yet to be accomplished. I understand that the mailbox issue was overridden by Chris Schuchuck after not being in attendance at that meeting.
Is there anything else you'd like to add? Is there anyone else here that would like to comment on this discussion? Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Jeffrey Mellon. I reside at this exact location at 713 Bellevue Boulevard North. And when I purchased this home, I had purchased a home in Omaha for $20,000 and I had sold that home for $168. I took that money. I did not have to live. I have other properties. And I invested that money into this home. Since I've invested that money into this home, I've experienced over $40,000 in property damage to my vehicles in front of my home in this exact parking location. There is no line of sight issue. You can see, the only person complaining is Mr. Caldwell. I would like to make it very clear and very evident, I do not know Michael Caldwell. He is not my neighbor. He does not reside in this location. He lives over a quarter of a mile away. This issue is extremely upsetting to me because when I first had an issue with Michael Caldwell's after the windows, I've had my windows broken out of my vehicles, hammers taken to my vehicles, my vehicles spray painted. I never experienced any of this type of property damage while living in the city of Omaha. Since I've lived there, when I first met Michael Caldwell, it was when I had called the police because my windows had been broken out of my vehicle. He parked the wrong way on Bellevue Boulevard facing the wrong way, got out of his car and told me if we had cameras, it's inadmissible in court. Then he stated he knows a friend and my house might burn down. I told him to leave. The second time I met Mr. Caldwell, he stood in my front yard with a camcorder videotaping, which was very upsetting to my daughter because he's done this several times to her before. I filed a band-aid barred. Since then, Mr. Caldwell has come to my home on three occasions with his video camera, parking in a no parking zone, parking the wrong way, blocking traffic, which we recorded, and videotaping us. He's come up on foot and videotaped my wife. And I don't see how that, he can stand one foot from my property line with a video camera and state I'm on public property. Over 50 times, I've seen Michael Caldwell run that exact stop sign at that location. He does not stop. He rolls through it and goes down Windy View. He's done it circling our home when he knew, he didn't think I was home, but my wife and daughter were out in the driveway, circling, 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 and then he leaves. I want to make it also clear that I nor any of my family members have ever been to his home. Now, my wife and daughter, they're looking into future legal action over this situation. And I firmly believe, over all the complaints they've had, that this is just another form of harassment by Michael Caldwell, Mrs. Caldwell's husband. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you please sign in for the record?
Yes, where do you like me to sign in?
Thank you. There should be a clipboard there. Are there others that would like to speak on this item? Chief Albert, do we have Officer Dargy here? Or any staff?
He is here if the council has questions on the history. We've been there numerous times. This is a neighborhood dispute. We've, like I said, we've been there lots of times dealing with both sides of the situation. So he has the history. He knows it very well. If someone here has questions for him about what we've done and what we haven't done, we're happy to answer those questions.
I just have a simple question. Is there another exit out of the neighborhood that can be taken besides just Chapit Drive?
Yes, sir, is mayor.
And is the line of sight also an issue or is that preferable?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, that was raised before, and then two line of sight issues were brought up by Mr. Caldwell that he felt that those were worse than the intersection in question on Chapit Boulevard.
Are there any questions from the council? Mr. Cook.
Lieutenant, I drove by there and of course there wasn't this many vehicles that we have in our pictures that were there. There was, I think, a vehicle plus the trailers and a tractor. From viewing these pictures, it seems like if there's cars that are parked on the driveway but whose rear of the vehicles are very close to the street and possibly then a vehicle on the street, it does seem like there might be some obstruction. Obviously, I wasn't out there to witness that because there was only one vehicle in the driveway. I guess, I guess my concern is, is that would it be appropriate? I know some places on the Boulevard, because maybe there's a curve, we say no parking on this side because it would cause conflict of trying to get around that curve. Does this intersection warrant a sign that says, that goes back, no parking from here to the corner that would maybe help? Now, I know then that hurts Mr., I think he said Mel. I know it hurts him for parking in front of his home, but I think we got to make a decision. Is there an issue here, a safety issue here? If not, then let's move on. If there is, how would we address it?
I guess to answer your question, number one, it is, it's a difficult intersection the way the road curves. There's no doubt about that. On Chapit Drive, we did actually, the street department did actually move one of the signs back a little bit farther to allow Mr. Mel to park some of his vehicles eastbound on Chapit Drive as it goes down the hill. In regards to the front of the house, that was kind of one of the first things that I approached Mr. Caldwell with was, you know, no parking signs, trying to feel him out to try to mediate this. And his reply was, you know, the street signs make the neighborhood look like a slum. It's not a matter of putting more signs. It's just enforcing under the belief that if an officer just went there and thought, well, that's unsafe, we can go ahead and write parking tickets for that. And I explained, well, we really need to have a parking sign to do that. It's very subjective for us to decide, you know, what I may think is bad, another officer may not. And so, you know, we go that route. But as far as with the street department deciding whether or not to put the sign, you know, that hasn't been decided yet.
And I believe when I drove by there Sunday, there was a, I don't know if it was this gentleman's vehicle. There was a vehicle with a trailer parked on the side road there.
Chapit.
Chapit.
Okay.
I mean, when I drove there coming up that hill and a little bit of a bend, the road bends a little bit, I could see at points, at times, it could be a problem. Maybe if all the residents were home and they had a lot of vehicles there. But it just seems to me that maybe no parking from here to the corner, I know it punishes the gentleman that lives there, but if there's parking on the side road, maybe that would resolve his problem, fix his problem. I'm surprised we haven't had more people complain because down that road, I know there's another road just a little bit to the north that also goes down. There does seem like there's probably quite a few residents that would bring a lot of traffic up that road.
And I went back and one of the things I did too was researched it back on accidents, went back 15 years, up till today unfortunately, when he had his vehicle hit. There've only been three accidents that have occurred there, and none of them have been as a result of the intersection. One person was passing another car on the Boulevard, another car had its turn signal on and decided last second not to turn, and then the hit and run that occurred today.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Blood.
I know how long I've been associated with this, and I know that Councilwoman Zanyuk was involved in it before and that there's been a lot of passion involved. And I thank both families for coming here this evening. I know it's not easy to always come and speak in a public forum. How long has the police department been working on this issue? Between calls for?
Probably, I think it was the beginning of November of 2014.
So we've spent a lot of time there?
Yes, ma'am.
And if you were to boil it down to one key issue for the reasons that you're called there, what would you say those issues are or that issue is?
Well, the root cause of the problem and why they're calling is due to, you know, Mr. Mel parking his vehicles in the public parking on the street that they feel blocks their sight.
That's the main reason that you've been called there every time?
Yes.
The concern that I've had is it seems that, for me personally, when I've spoken with this family, and I can speak for a few others, is that we do try and resolve what we can within our parameter, but it never really seems to be exactly what's wanted. And this is my personal opinion, but there does seem to be personal issues between the families. I had a really hard time when I've discussed it or talked to me email, really finding what the crux of the problem truly was. I'm glad that we got it to be narrowed down for tonight. And my concern is that if indeed we decide that the sign is the end-all thing and is going to resolve the key issue that they say, are you still going to be having to go out there for other issues? And that's, that's my concern, is that from the picture taking to police reports that I've seen, my concern is that there's a personality conflict as well. And I want to make sure that we're making good policy based on what the true issue is with that area and not, in this instance, worried about feelings but worried about policy. And I'm really just concerned about how this has been blown in 100 different ways when supposedly there's just one issue. And if the one issue is visibility and we need a sign, that's an easy fix. But if that's not the true issue and we go ahead and do that and this continues, where does this end? And that's a concern. I guess that's kind of rhetorical, but where does that end? Do you feel that you may, if we put up a sign and we fix that one issue, with everything that you've seen going on, and I want you to be truthful, do you think we'll still end up being there for other things?
Honestly, I think that that may happen, yes. You know, we put the no parking sign. I guess that's up to determine how far back we're going to do it and then we're basically, you know. The problem is the road curves.
Right.
As it comes at intersections. So I mean, we push them back a little bit farther with the height of the vehicles and the way the road curves. I mean, you're still, in my opinion, going to have a site triangle issue, not to mention the fact that quite a few of the intersections along the Boulevard are, in my opinion, pretty close to the same.
I agree. It was bad planning. I mean, there's, there's
Yeah, I mean,
Built wrong.
If we could do this over again, you know, a lot of the house, that house wouldn't be built the way it is, but unfortunately, we're stuck with what's there.
Right, and so what can we do feasibly? And we need to make sure that if indeed we are willing to supposedly address the one issue that was brought tonight, that this is not going to be an ongoing thing because we waste taxpayers' dollars if you keep having to show up over and over and over again. And it's never a waste to go to a call when we have a concerned citizen, and you guys are awesome at addressing citizen concerns. But as a legislative body, we also have to be responsible and figure out where does the buck stop. So I appreciate your candor. Thank you.
Are there other questions from the council? Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. None of that occupants' vehicles are parked illegally, correct?
Correct.
And to pair it off with what Councilwoman Blood was talking about, my concern is we have so many intersections in the hilly part of Bellevue that provide the same type of degree of difficulty that my fear is we'd be spending days and weeks and months evaluating intersections throughout the eastern part of Bellevue to find out if we have a problem with them or not. That's how they were designed. They were designed by engineers as we went through that process of building them. Are they, are they a hazard? I don't know. I've lived here almost all my life and I've been on those roads multitudes of times and I've never had any close situations where I thought I was going to get an accident. I just take my time and pull out. Just be very careful. I don't want to see us pass legislation for one thing. We've done that so many times in the past and it always comes back to hurt the city in the long run. Unintended consequences. I just think we need to deal with this situation as best we can, come up with some reasonable solution and move on.
Are there others? Mr. Modri.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I've been by that intersection numerous times as well. And at times when all the vehicles are parked there, you know, there is, there is a line of sight issue, but I don't know that it can be helped. Other times when all the vehicles aren't there, it's, you know, it's not as much a problem as Mr. Cook, Councilman Cook saw when he drove out there. Yeah, if the vehicles aren't parked illegally, you know, I don't know that there's a lot we can do to rectify the situation just because of the nature of the curve in the road, the hills coming up. You know, you have a similar situation on Camp Gifford, right down, right to the north. And then Cold Road, I think is the other intersection you were talking about.
Yes, sir.
To get out of that area. So I agree with being very careful with any legislation that we might pass, rectify this one situation.
Mr. Berlowitz.
The only thing I'd interject, obviously the concern has been narrowed. I know there were some comments raised regarding mailbox, sidewalks, even zoning. Staff is here. Those are not relevant issues at this point, but I did want you to know that we're able to answer those questions if they were necessary. I just want to make that understood.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Berlowitz, too. The main issue, I think, is the one we've been dealing with, the line of sight, the concern of motorists and people trying to get through along the road safely. We all share that concern. I'm not sure we have a good solution at this point. But one of the other things that I heard was that some of those vehicles were not legally licensed. Is that your experience or are all of the licenses truly legally licensed and able to be on the street?
The vehicles are legally licensed. Some of the trailers were not. We don't currently have anything in code or anything we can cite somebody on their property. And I have explained to Mel, you know, once that leaves a property and gets on the street, now that's another story. I mean, he could be stopped once he's driving for not having a plate on the vehicle, but having a trailer, as long as it's parked on an approved surface on his property, on his personal property, there's not much we can do for that for registration.
So if it's on personal property, it can be legal. If it's parked on the street, it would not be?
Right, yeah. If he's towing it down the street, he's driving to a job site and he has a trailer and it doesn't have a plate on it, that's a statute that he's violating through the state of Nebraska that we can make him a stop on.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
The only other thing is not for you, but I heard also in the complaints that there was no sidewalk put in. So this, if it's not the appropriate time, that's fine, but if it is the appropriate time, then Mr. Schuchuck could perhaps address that issue.
Thank you. Just based on the comment Ms. Caldwell made, there is a provision of the city code that requires a sidewalk be constructed for new construction or the addition of square footage to a residence. Just finishing the garage does not trigger that requirement. If they had built another garage or something like that, that would have triggered the requirement for a sidewalk, but just finishing the garage does not. So there was no requirement during their construction to put a sidewalk in.
Thank you. No further questions?
Chuck Frederick, 1511 Madison Street. There's probably nobody here that drives the Boulevard more than I do. I drive it every morning, take my wife to work, and also Zig drive the Boulevard when I pick her up at night. And there's vehicles on the Boulevard all over the place, and you just have to be very careful when you drive. And when I get to that intersection, I always notice and look and see if there's another car coming, and if it's going to turn my way, then I slow down and pull in or vice versa. If a car is coming from the west and turning in, I'm careful also. So I think it's a matter of the people being careful when they're driving. That's a 25-mile speed limit there, and a lot of times cars are going faster than that. And that's, that's the problem. I think that, I don't think, I think the biggest problem, it sounds to me like, is that the personal attacks that the, being on the other, on man's property and video cameraing things and scratching his car, that's more of a bigger problem I see than this, this parking on the street. I mean, this is a minor thing. I mean, in other words, I agree with Mr. Carmichael. This is, this is a Boulevard all the way along. It's, there's cars there. You just have to be careful. When another car is coming, you may have to stop until that car goes by. This is common sense. So let's not try to do some, some type of regulations rather than just probably take care of the problems that we have at hand. Thank you.
My name's Russ Lurlich. I reside at 707 Bellevue Boulevard North, a couple houses down. On the surface, this might look like a line of sight issue. It's personal. I've seen Jeff's wife and daughter scared videotaped. I don't know what is being done with the pictures or the videotape or where they're going. I just know that they've come down to my house scared out of my mind because this happens when he's not home. I would encourage you all to take a good look at the police reports, the frequency with the calls, some other things that have been happening with Mr. Caldwell, and some of the dynamics that are going on between the families. Look at that, look at this a little deeper than a line of sight issue because it's really, really not what it's about. I'm down the street watching this. I know Mel's. I wouldn't call myself a disinterested party, but I've watched it enough from a distance to know that something is very wrong with this situation, and it is personal.
Thank you. Are there others that would like to say a few words? Do you have additional information to share with us?
Well, I have a couple of things that I would reply to that when the cars are parked within 30 feet of the intersection, it is in fact against city ordinance. So it seemed somewhat misleading that they weren't parked illegally. And I also, I mean, this is a personal problem with Mr. Mel. For anyone who has approached him, a 65-year-old woman in our neighborhood who stopped there and asked Mrs. Mel to move her car was cursed at and accused of vandalizing their vehicles. We have not damaged their vehicles. We would not damage their vehicles or their home. At no point have we taken any video footage. We have taken pictures which we have provided to you. If there have been steps that have been taken up to this point, I would be interested to understand what those are because from our vantage point, there haven't been any steps taken to remedy this situation. That there have been some conversations that, according to Tammy Palm, Mr. Mel was requested to move his mailbox. He said that he would, then he didn't. When it came to enforcement, then Mr. Schuchuck stepped in and said, well, we're not going to enforce that, even though that was, what was said was a reasonable step to take. So I guess I'm confused about what steps have been taken up to this point, and I'm certainly open to hear what those are.
Mr. Berlowitz. Oh, Councilwoman Blood.
Can we have Chris respond to that, please?
The discussion she had with Tammy regarded the mailbox. There is nothing wrong with the location of the mailbox. The site triangle definition calls for something to be, to the right words.
Meaningfully obstructed.
Significantly or materially impede vision. That mailbox does not do that. I've been out there.
I think if you look at image number 16.
May I talk, please? Tammy's notes from the meeting and the notes from the letter from Mrs. Caldwell that was in your packet states that as a result of the meeting, they were going to request the Melz to return his mailbox to his original location. They could not order it changed because there was nothing wrong or illegal about that and there didn't need to be a permit issued for a mailbox location. So, so the fact that she's saying that we were, we told her we would do it or something like that. The results of the meeting were that they would request Mr. Mel to move his mailbox. He did not have to do that.
Thank you. Do you have anything else to add?
I think that was pretty much it. I, I do believe that Tammy agreed that he would, she would move it and that the only reason they didn't enforce it is because Mr. Schuchuck overrode her decision in the agreement that we made with Lieutenant Dargy and Tammy Palm that day.
Councilman Blood.
Mayor, and I apologize, but I want to be really honest. I have a real concern when we have a staff person that tells you what happened and then you stand there and you say, well, no, that's not what happened. This is what I was told. And, but, but I'm telling you that he just told you this is what, what the case is. And that's what happened throughout many of the emails that I had too, is that it seems that I would hear lots of things outside of the conversations and it was your interpretation and that happens. I know you and I can sit in the same room and hear the same thing and interpret it differently. I am just really, really concerned here that maybe you're not hearing everything that's, that's being said to you. And I strongly encourage administration and staff one last time to maybe meet and end this. There's no legislation here that needs to be made in this case.
Is it possible to ask Tammy Palm directly because?
Well, not tonight, but that would be the, the case for you to meet with administration and staff.
That would be great.
And, and make sure that good notes are taken. And, and again, I'm, I'm not picking on you, but this is what I just heard tonight. This is concerning. Chris is, is giving it to you straight. Somewhere there's a misinterpretation. I don't know where that lies. But we have the information and I appreciate you coming forward. I appreciate, again, both sides coming forward. I think there's a resolution outside of policy change that needs to be addressed and I think that needs to be done with our, our highly competent staff and administration.
Mr. Berlowitz.
Yeah, the only thing I'd add and not to put the chief on the spot, the chief did recently meet personally with, I think, was it with Mr. Caldwell, chief or Mrs. Caldwell?
Mr. Caldwell.
Okay. So we, we have had, and I'm not opposed to that, but I did want to let you know, we have met. The chiefs met with her, obviously staff is. I've always believed the best way is to, if at all possible, administratively resolve it. But when we determine what, if there's a resolution or there isn't, that's the extent of what we can do. So we'll obviously always try to find, but obviously we've had a lot of discussion, we've had an issue raised. Vehicles not illegal parked. There are apparently a lot of sight triangle issues along there. So, you know, we'll definitely meet. But it's, I don't think we can produce the results that the Caldwell's want because of, of the various similar instances that exist along Bellevue Boulevard. And there is no illegal parking at this point, but I'm, have no problem with meeting.
What are the wishes of the council? Mr. Carmichael, do you have a question?
May I ask one more question, Mr. Mel? Sir, could you please come up for one more time? Just for clarification, there was comments made that those are business vehicles. Do you run a business out of your house?
Yes, I do.
Your home-based business?
Yes.
And what do you do?
I restored the Fort Cook House for the Douglas County Historical Society. I did the Mickey Finn, 7-Eleven, the Little Kings, Mike Rogers Pontiac, almost every church in town. You name it. I'm working at St. Margaret Mary's. I do a lot of custom kitchen bathroom models.
Okay, and you use those vehicles for your business?
Yep, they're my tools in those trailers.
That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
What are the wishes of the council? Okay, so administration will meet with the Codwells and try to resolve this through the administration. So, so you will hear from Chris Schuchack or Mr. Berlowitz?
Staff will be in contact.
Staff will be in contact with both of you. Thank you for coming out this evening. Item 5B, presentation on LED lighting investment grade audit proposal by Steve Trubner, Phillips Lighting. Welcome. Mr. Burks.
Good evening. Tonight, we have another presentation, unless otherwise directed, this will probably be the last research presentation from the, regarding LED lighting and the conversions and system or infrastructure acquisition. I have Steve Trubner from Phillips Lighting. Steve is the National Accounts Manager and Public Sector Solutions Professional for Phillips Lighting. He's going to talk about some of his research and also about some potential benefits of owning the infrastructure. Steve?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you very much for, for having me. Let me sign in and I'll begin. Okay. All right. Thank you for allowing me some, some time to discuss this topic with you. My name is Steve Trubner and I work for Phillips Lighting. I'm part of the Public Sector Solutions Team within Phillips Lighting. And this is a group that was created actually in the last couple of years because there are so many cities just like Bellevue that are facing, whether it's the same challenge or the same opportunity in LED street lighting and other lighting potential within their city. So I live in Kansas City and I work with cities across the Midwest on various custom lighting projects. Just a little background on, on my past dialogue with, with the city was, was introduced to the city administrator and the mayor's office in October. We started to explore the potential of an LED street lighting project. Knowing that you're, you're working with other good qualified partners as well. We began to do a little bit of a high-level assessment to help the city determine if this was something that was feasible and would make a good political, financial, technical sense to, to go forward. There is a lot of good news and, and good information that I think came out of that. But the, one of the real hurdles that was identified at that time was the ownership of the poles and how that impacts the potential for this project. As you know, the 4,700, give or take, streetlights in the city of Bellevue are owned by OPPD. And I, I really don't want to spend much time talking about Phillips. I would rather, because you all have already gone through a few of these presentations and I think have a pretty good understanding, like to be able to answer as many questions and get into a dialogue sooner than later. Phillips is, the, Phillips Lighting is the largest and oldest lighting company in the world and the, one of the reasons that's important is, for example, the, we outspend our closest competitor in research and development by almost five to one. So Phillips is at the leading edge of this industry and this Public Sector Solutions Team has been created, as I mentioned, to specifically work with cities like Bellevue so that we can begin to remove what would be unnecessary layers of cost. So these projects are more achievable for cities. So by working directly with a city, we can come up with a more attractive business case to move forward. There is no exact one way that we begin working with cities. Sometimes it's a project that might be phased in over several years. Sometimes it's a turnkey project that's implemented over a course of several months. Sometimes they have lighting controls that add additional savings to it. Sometimes it's, it's just the fixture. So there's a lot of flexibility as we come forward and try and put together a customized solution for our customers. I think that probably fair to assume that you've touched on some of the primary benefits of an LED street lighting project. Certainly the benefit to the taxpayer, capturing some of the new technology and being able to deliver those savings back to your budget or reinvest it into the infrastructure. The public safety component is essential. I just returned from the U.S. Conference of Mayors and it was a topic, LED street lighting and how it can improve what public safety officers are doing in, in our communities. Whether it is their ability to raise lighting in a particular area when there is a emergency situation. Whether it is their ability to be able to better identify an offender in terms of the color of the car or the color of blue jeans or sweatshirt. It's, it's really something that's, that's important. Smart city capabilities, this is really where the industry is, is going. That this is much more than a lighting project, that there are some capabilities here that allow the city to capture additional savings, whether they are dimming those lights 20 or 30 percent, which is almost not noticeable to the human eye between 2:00 AM and 5:00 AM and capturing real savings during that period of time. And lengthening the life of this equipment. Or if it is programming these lights to perhaps full moon, you don't need as much street lighting. Particular neighborhoods might need more versus less. Arterial roots, more versus less. There's a lot of very smart programming that can take place that can help drive good efficiencies and savings towards the city. Environmental impact, this is, this is essential. From what I understand, cities spend most of their electrical dollars on their water treatment facilities as well as street lighting. This is something where you can really go out and capture significant energy savings and make a smart impact on the environment. And something that we'll talk about today that may be a little bit different is the investment in future infrastructure. As I mentioned, OPPD currently owns this system. Other cities throughout the country are working with their utilities to acquire that system. Not just so they could do that LED project, but these street lighting systems are quickly becoming an important asset to a city. Not only because it stretches out into all of your communities, but there is revenue earning potential for cities in, in the future. And I'm going to touch on that in a little bit, but I did want to point out this quote. Cisco, in fact, is one of the companies that is investing in cities and their lighting. Not in the same way that Phillips is, but this quote always jumped off the page at me, which is lighting is becoming the iPhone of the street. You sometimes use an iPhone to make phone calls, but you also use it for a lot of other important things. Some of those, just as an example, we work with a lot of cellular companies that are trying to improve their 4G bandwidth or their service to their customers. They're interested in investing in cities and using those streetlights. And we have what's called a smart pole, which is a little different shaped pole, but keeps some of that technology in there. Meter reading support for a utility that may be going to an automated meter infrastructure is looking for those support services. There's revenue potential there for a city. Wireless internet and a whole range of platform application technologies that we know about some of them now, but it's amazing what's going to be out there in five years. So this is an opportunity for the city for the future. This is, this was a presentation done by the U.S. Department of Energy and I just wanted to point out the, the last bullet point. This was done at the lighting industry called Light Fair that was in May. The technology has continued to improve. The products have continued to get better and better. The life of the equipment has continued to get longer and putting out better and more impactful light. It's the controls now that is really creating in the digital nature of technology some additional savings and opportunities for cities. Here's a very simple look at how a city would be able to capture energy savings and arguably drive them back into a project. On the left, and I believe that's red, I'm color deficient myself, but the is the old luminaire and, and the existing system, which is what Bellevue has. It is an outdated street lighting system with old technology. Going all the way to the, right, it is green, here it says, to the, to the far side is allowing cities to capture over 60% in energy savings. And I think you know that the city of Bellevue spends almost a million dollars on their system annually. That's not a million dollars in energy. That's divided up between energy costs, tariffs to OPPD for the operations and maintenance of that system. So you can see just some of the potential other savings outside of the one-for-one replacement of 60%. When you're moving to a time clock, getting away from photocell sensors, which turn on a light when it says that it's dark enough. Using the clock in different areas of town so they know when to go on and they're programmed correctly. Going on five minutes before the sun goes down and coming off five minutes before the sun comes up. Removing those day burners, that's really not an issue for you now because OPPD owns the system. But not having lights that are running during the day and constant light output, I'm going to pass over that until we get into a deeper discussion months down the road. But what we are seeing in cities here in the U.S., in the Midwest are savings that are ranging from 60% to 75% or more. And those are significant dollars to be able to reinvest. I know as the city explores the the why and the how, this, this slide is focused on the, on the why. If you see that top blue line, that's actually correlated to your existing expenditure. And those are really typically on average, energy costs going up at, at 3% a year. However, it is anticipated, not just in Nebraska, but across the country and regardless of who is in the White House, that the continued forward progress on the climate initiatives and power plants moving off of coal and towards either natural gas or other alternative energy solutions. Those investments are going to be paid for, but they're going to be paid for it on the back of the rate payers, which is something to consider because whether you're a resident or whether you're managing the city budget, those costs are going to go up and likely go up at more than just 3% a year. So this is a, also a step in risk mitigation and cost mitigation. I'm going to take a, not a break, but ask if there are any questions at this point. My next slide, I also have in a handout, so you don't have to worry about squinting to read it and I'll distribute that. As we mentioned, the primary obstacle here is the ownership of the lights. Oh, thank you. Right there. So this is a process that's being used for cities that are same size as Bellevue in the Kansas City area, for example, that are going forward to try and acquire their system from their utility. Which is really central to be able to go forward with a project that a city owns the asset. I will say that OPPD is making strides, forward progress in identifying LED fixtures that they're comfortable with. Phillips is working with OPPD and we're confident that we'll be part of that group. They're also working to identify a rate that they can associate with those fixtures. Now, will that rate equate to 60% in dollar savings? Maybe more like 40 or 50%. All of those are important variables that are in play at this time. So the city has a lot of options out there. One of which, which is, we would strongly encourage you to go forward with now and explore is the engagement of OPPD for the potential in acquiring that system. Because if you own the system right now, the payback would be very attractive. And I think the city council would be moving forward quickly. When you add in the cost of acquiring the system as well as the cost of the retrofit, that's where the challenge lies for the city.
First of all, I want to say that I know a lot about Phillips. I think you've done an exceptional job of protecting your intellectual property. You guys have been really good watchdogs when it comes to that, so I give you kudos for that. The one thing I'm not hearing The one thing I'm not hearing, to kind of cut to the chase, because this is redundant, is I'm not hearing what your competitive advantage is. And I need to know what sets you apart from the other presentations.
Yeah.
What is your company's competitive advantage that will tell us that you rise above the other two?
In this scenario, I think the single most important thing that I would point out is that any project that you would be going to do with your lights would be 70 percent or so in equipment costs. That would be the investment. You're talking about working with a direct manufacturer of that exact equipment versus companies who the first call they're going to have to make is to a manufacturer. So, energy performance contracting, and I am a fan of it, and I think it is a terrific model, and this is part of what we're talking about here, is designed for buildings. And it's designed when you're bundling energy measures together, like HVAC, maybe some renewables, some lighting. In this scenario, and you start blending the savings to get a balanced payback. In this scenario, we're talking about one measure, which is lighting. And we're talking about a significant investment in equipment and the potential to work with a manufacturer. So that is what we're seeing across the countries, is our distinct advantage when it comes to a city and their taxpayers, is that you're getting more bang for the buck. Secondly, is at least some of the advantages that go with our equipment and some of our controls, technologies. Our team of street lighting experts that are from Philips, that work for Philips, that will work with your Public Works Department to develop a customized project. It does not have to go forward in one fell swoop. It could be broken up into phases. There's a lot of flexibility that we can provide and work with you on. And I would, I would suggest that on something like this, where there is other lighting potential in the city that you might want to explore too, that working with a lighting partner, whether it's architectural lighting, bridge lighting, downtown lighting scenarios by the campus, that there's a lot of things that we would be able to explore with you. Right now, the focus is on street lighting, but when you're talking about a hurdle that includes significant cost for acquisition, you would want to be the most efficient as possible on the execution of your project.
I would follow up on that question, because I had assumed that as a manufacturer, you're manufacturing the lights, you're manufacturing other components. So the follow-up is, is that cost likely to be passed on to Bellevue because you're manufacturing, you don't have the middle person, so they're having to take a cut? Do we get a better rate on those lights?
Yes. Do you get a better cost? Are your lights less expensive working directly with Philips versus third-party? Yes.
Okay. And in the event that we, and when, two present, three presentations ago, we started this, I was not too excited about going with the performance funding for it, because we went down that road once. But the more I listened, the more I'm informed, and I'm no longer opposed to that. There could be some real advantages. One being OPPD is moving this direction, but they're saying two years. At the rates we've been given, there's 365,000 approximately savings every year. So that's roughly over $700,000 that we could save by moving at our pace, and that two years could be pushed back.
Correct.
So, the advantage to me, I'm starting to see, is recouping that money and getting into it sooner. What other advantages are there to going with a private company versus going with
You're correct that OPPD is going, across the country, utilities are the last to the LED party. And you can understand it just from a business model, but they are making progress. They are, they understand the pressure, they understand the political desires of the city and what this does from a public good standpoint for cities. So they are moving. But in that situation, they have more control than the city would have in a scenario where you were going on forward faster. Not only would you be able to put yourself in a position where you are capturing the immediate energy savings and potentially metering those energy savings, but from an operations and maintenance standpoint, bringing that effort in-house or using a local subcontractor, an electrical contractor here to do that work for you, is the model that we're building with other cities. And it's called lighting as a service. And it's, and it could be, it could be procured under an energy performance contracting. Lighting as a service is just what it's called, just like energy performance contracting is a contracting vehicle. So in this scenario, where we talked about the energy savings of ballpark 60 percent, and Philips makes some good stuff, but there's competitors out there, and I think that they're all fairly comparable along those energy savings potential. On the operations and maintenance piece, there's two buckets of savings that you'll find. One is that if you were to take over that system and be, working under an LED street lighting system and having a local contractor doing that work, you're going to have incredible insight into the system, the needs, the asset management information that comes from that. And so we're seeing savings over 64 percent from a cost standpoint that would be rolled into that. The other thing that's tougher to quantify, but cities are figuring it out as they go forward with their acquisitions, is that when they have acquired the system and they're no longer paying the tariffs and some of the other rates associated with it, they're finding immediate savings to their bottom line, which is then helping create a payback for the acquisition process itself. Mission Hills in Kansas, just on the other side of the state line from Kansas City, Missouri, I think has said that they're paying about $1,700 per pole on average, and they're still going to be able to achieve almost a five-year payback on their acquisition. Other cities, like Leewood, Kansas, paid closer to $1,000 a pole. So that's a key piece that you'll be working with OPPD to determine, is it a thousand, is it 500, is it 1,500? Because that's going to impact the overall desire and value of going forward and when.
So if we were to do that, are you saying then we, or you on our behalf, would negotiate with OPPD on the cost per pole, and we would purchase the existing poles and infrastructure, and then you would retrofit those? Or give me an example of how we proceed should we do this?
Our recommendation on this is that, is laid out here, is that the city, if you were to go forward with a retrofit, you would have to own the system. And so engaging the city attorney, the city administrator, engaging with OPPD to identify the cost of that system is something that the city does face-to-face with the, with the utility. We can provide you some of the data and supporting information that can help you along that process. What do we think that payback's going to look like? What do we think those savings are going to look like? What do we think the costs are going to look like? But if OPPD tells you that it's going to be $7 million to acquire the system versus $3 or $4 million, I think it's a very different decision that you have to make. So that is an important first step. And then as you see here, as the city creates its business case to make that purchase, and it takes some time, then you can move into the retrofit. And yes, in this situation, if I were to paint the picture, that is the steps. Once the city was, had acquired the actual, the system, we would go forward with that survey for you and the retrofit, and also likely, assuming it's something that you would want to use, identify with you local contracting partners, not only for the installation, which we do here locally with your local partners to help the investment in the community, but the ongoing service would be done too, from a maintenance standpoint, by a local electrical contractor.
And the advantage that I was looking for in the earlier presentations, you're saying for the city to own the equipment, is as future generating sources of revenue, be it internet or other kinds of applications, much like we have towers, cell towers, and we lease or rent those out. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. There is additional revenue that the city can capture now and in the future to offset their obligation, their cost obligation, if you will. So the savings will carry you so far in this scenario, I think that depending on the acquisition of the system, the savings would be able to fund certainly the retrofit of the, of the system. However, it would be, you have a lot of options, one of which is to acquire so that you can capture some of that future technology. We work with a partner, for example, and it's an emerging group from a cellular standpoint that for each smart pole that is installed, and let's say we're going down Mission Road here, and for every 10 light poles, there may be a smart pole in place. That partner is purchasing the LED lights for the other 10 on behalf of the city. That's one of the types of models that's emerging and that's available now in some scenarios. And so there's a lot of also outside revenue potential. The city, if, would also certainly be able to, if you decided not to go forward to acquire the system because you, for whatever reason, as OPPD moves forward, you will also have the opportunity to do a retrofit with them, with the product and partners of your choice, but you will be sort of beholden to their rate, at least, as well as some of the other parameters that they're, that they're laying out there. But the engagement with OPPD first, I think is going to be essential for the city to iron all that out.
That's key. Thank you very much. I appreciate your information and being here.
Thank you, sir. I think so. I would, if there's any other questions, I would be happy to answer those, but I know that you've been through a few presentations, and I do want to say, as I articulated, I think we have a, an efficient business model, but you're going down a good path with good partners, and this is a good investment for the city. And we would do whatever we could to support you as you determine if this is something that you'd like to go forward with.
Mr. Burlowitz.
The only thing I'd probably add, if, whoever we move ahead with, if we move towards acquisition of OPPD, it's kind of like doing a retail acquisition.
Right.
Assessment, you have to do an assessment of all the system, the age of the poles, the value of the poles. Some poles are new, some are. So there's a lot of data that has to be done. It obviously can be done, and clearly with input of Philips or whoever we use, that'll be a key step in terms of engaging OPPD to actually begin negotiations to know what a fair market value is.
It's a critical first step, and we like to work with the cities even prior to a procurement for an audit, so that you can sort all this out, so that you are using a, again, a good local partner to do that assessment for you. We can help with the cost and savings analysis, but you really want to get pretty close on that business case before you determine how to go forward.
Are there any other questions from the council? I see none. Thank you, Mr. Tropner. I appreciate it and look forward to hearing from you again.
Great. I will have my information with Mr. Burke. You can contact me directly if you have any other questions, but thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Moving on to item number six, liquor license. 6A, R&amp;J Enterprise, Inc., doing business as Jammers Pub. Application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits in the Beer Garden at 1505 Galvin Road South on July 18, 2015, from 2:00 p.m. Welcome.
I'm Rick Corbin from R&amp;J Enterprise. I own and operate Jammers Pub on 1505 Galvin Road South.
Thank you for coming out this evening. I'm going to open for a public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. I see none. We'll close a public hearing. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval to Nebraska Liquor Commission for R&amp;J Enterprises, Inc., doing business as Jammers Pub, and their application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits in a beer garden at 1505 Galvin Road South on July 18, 2015, from 2:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just want to let you know I'll be abstaining from votes for liquor licenses for religious and personal reasons.
Any other discussion? See none, please vote.
Five yes votes, one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 6B, Willow Springs Bottling Company, doing business as Cornhusker Beverage Mart. Application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits at a reception being held in Bellevue University Student Center at 1,000 Galvin Road South on August 29, 2015, from 3:00 to 11:00 p.m.
Good evening. I'm Jim Subjik. I've been the manager of the Cornhusker Beverage Mart almost 50 years, and I'm the current owner.
Thank you for coming out this evening. I'll open for a public hearing now on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close a public hearing. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve recommendations to Nebraska Liquor Commission for Willow Springs Bottling Company Incorporated, doing business as Cornhusker Beverage Mart, and their application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits at a reception being held in the Bellevue University Student Center at 1,000 Galvin Road South on August 29, 2015, from 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
Five yes votes, one abstention.
Thank you. Item 6C, Fraternal Order of Eagles, 3912. Application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits in a beer garden in the back parking lot of 209 West Mission Avenue on September 19, 2015, from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m.
Good evening, City Council. Debbie O'Shea, representing Fraternal Order of Eagles, Bellevue 3912, 209 West Mission.
Welcome. I'll now open for a public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close a public hearing. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve recommendations to Nebraska Liquor Commission for the Fraternal Order of Eagles, number 3912, and their application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits in a beer garden in the back parking lot at 209 West Mission Avenue on September 19, 2015, from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
Five yes votes, one abstention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven, ordinance for adoption, third reading, none. Eight, ordinance for public hearing, second reading. 6A, ordinance number 3815. Suprema, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3815. An ordinance to amend, ordinance number 3770, providing for the sale of a certain described real estate, same being that part of Lot 2 in the northwest corner of Section 2 of approximately 3.83 acres, Outlots A and B, and Lot 1, Daniel's Farm Edition. A subdivision as surveyed, platted, and recorded in Sarpy County, Nebraska, directing the conveyance of such real estate and the manner and terms thereof, and designating an effective date.
Thank you. I'm now open for a public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close a public hearing. The third and final reading will be on Monday, July 13. Takes us to item number nine, ordinance for induction, first reading, there is none. 10, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. 10A, public hearing, application for an event license for Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation in partnership with Bellevue Chamber of Commerce for the 2015 Riverfest, Red, White, and Q, in the event in the Hayworth Park, from 4:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. on Friday, July 17, and 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. on July 18, 2015. Welcome.
Good evening. Jim Risto, Bellevue Chamber of Commerce. I'm back.
Welcome back, Mr. Risto. I'll open for a public hearing on the application of this event. Anyone wishing to speak on this, please do so at this time. See none, close a public hearing. We need two, I believe, two votes on one and two?
Yes.
Yes.
Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation in partnership with Bellevue Chamber of Commerce, application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer, wine at the 2015 Riverfest, Red, White, and Q in Hayworth Park from 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM on Friday, July 17, from 9:00 AM until 2:00 AM on July 18. And I'll open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Ten A, one. Please do so at this time. See none. I'll close a public hearing. Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for the Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation in partnership with the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce for the application for a special designated liquor license to sell beer at the 2015 Riverfest, Red, White, and Q event in Hayworth Park from 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM on Friday, July 17, from 9:00 AM until 2:00 AM on July 18, 2015.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
Five yes votes, one abstention.
Thank you. Item ten A two, Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation in partnership with Bellevue Chamber of Commerce, application for fireworks display permit in Hayworth Park on July 18, in conjunction with Riverfest, Red, White, and Q event. Mr. Carmichael.
Well, thank you. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for the Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation in partnership with the Bellevue Chamber of Commerce for the application for a fireworks display permit in Hayworth Park. I guess I didn't say that for the Liquor Control Commission, did I? But I was on a roll there, Jim. On July 18, 2015, in conjunction with the Riverfest, Red, White, and Q event.
I'm going to put that motion on hold. I need to open for a public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. I see none. Thank you. I'll take that motion. I need a second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you, Mr. Risto.
Need to go back and vote on the event license itself, too.
Oh, yes. We need a motion. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve their application for an event license for 4:00 PM to 2:00 AM on Friday, July 17, and 6:00 AM until 2:00 AM on July 18, 2015, for the yearly and great fun Riverfest.
Second.
Second by Mr., I heard the voice over here. Was it Modri or Preister? Modri. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. See you at Riverfest. Item ten B, site plan approval for lots one and two, Chadwick Apartments Edition. Welcome.
Good evening. Ralph Gladback, architect. I'm representing the owner tonight. I'm here to answer any questions that may have on that.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gladback? I'll open for a public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none. I'll close a public hearing. What are the wishes of the council? Mr. Cook.
I'd like to approve the site plan approval for lots one and two, Chadwick Apartment Edition.
Second.
Someone didn't have their mic on. Was that Mr. Cook?
Sorry.
Going to make that motion again?
I'll make a motion for approval for the site plan for lots one and two, Chadwick Apartment Edition.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eleven, resolution, eleven A.
Mayor.
Oh, Mr. Cook. Oh, Mr. Cook.
I'll make a motion to, for approval of the mixed-use development agreement.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Discussion? See none, please vote.
Can you vote again, please? Wrong way on the button.
Please vote again.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Eleven, resolutions. Eleven A, resolution 2015-16, authorizing reimbursement of expenditures made by the city in connection with costs incurred with the construction of paving and other improvements and street improvements, District 2011-4, Ridgewood Road, Ridge Road and Reedmont Drive, District Number 2011-18, Sun Valley, District Number 2011-21, Chandler Hills, District Number 2201-23, Child's Estate Acres, District Number 2015-1, Blue Ridge Pleasant View and 32 Street, and District 2015-2, Martin View Edition, through the proceeds of the insurance of certain debt obligation in the amount of $2,400,000. Mr. Carmichael.
I'd like to make a motion for approval for resolution number 2015-16.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item number thirteen, current business. Twelve A is under consent. Twelve B, approve the engineering and surveying service agreement for the North Park Roadway Loop and Athletic Field Parking Lot Design Service at the American Heroes Park, and authorizing Mayor to sign the agreement and e-verify. Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve this engineering and surveying services agreement.
Second.
Second by Mr. Carmichael. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item twelve C, Mr. Roberts.
Public Works is going to pull this one due to the fact that there was only one bid, and it came in about forty percent over the estimate, so UNO decided to just back off until we can regroup and see how we want to handle this.
Okay, thank you. Takes us to item twelve D, request to accept mini grant from the Nebraska Office Highway Safety for $15,500 to conduct a traffic, traffic crash reconstruction course for law enforcement officers, September 21st through October 2nd, 2015. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Modri. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve E, approval of lease extension number four for 726 Ford Crook Road North. Mr. Carmichael.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, or for approval of the lease for extension number four for 726 Ford Crook Road North.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I believe this is just for one more year. Is that correct?
Um, at this point, Councilwoman Preister, this is kind of an essential item for us. We have a couple of things that are, that are important to us. We have lots of things stored there, the crash reconstruction stuff that you guys just voted on. All of that gear is stored there. There's a lot of it. The motor unit is stored there, and it also is a fully functioning location for any officer to, to stop in there and do just about everything they could do at the station with the exception of logged property, which helps for all those districts north of Cornhusker. So, at this point, this is fairly important. For me to lose this lease, I'd have to find a different place to store this stuff, and we'd lose that coverage. So, at this point, I guess we could look at it annually, if that's, if that's what you want to do, but for this year, anyway, this is pretty important to me.
I, I understand the importance, and you have been evaluating it since we centralized all the police operations. Is that assessment continuing to go on, then, or is this something you're looking at permanently, is kind of my question essentially?
Um, right now, I guess it's more of a permanent thing until we would find some other places to store some of those other items that are stored there at the moment. We have no place to, to put that stuff.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? See none, please vote. Thank you. Twelve F, accept bids and award contract for CDVG Owner Occupied Housing Rehabilitation Project 2014-1. I'll read all of that. And to R&amp;R Construction for $22,000. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve G, accept bids and award the contract for CDVG Owner Occupied Housing Rehabilitation Project 2014-2, to R&amp;R Construction for $11,126.50. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve H, approval of the settlement agreement for a tort claim with Janice Michaelick and Mark Michaelick to be paid by One Beacon, the city liability carrier. Mr. Sullivan.
This matter was handled by a separate company. The McCollics are very close friends of mine, as well as their daughters, with my daughters. So, we're just putting on this for approval. We weren't involved in the negotiations in the process.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the settlement agreement for a tort claim with Janice and Mark McCollack to be paid by the One Beacon, the city's liability carrier.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Twelve I, approval and ratification of the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Bellevue and the Bellevue Professional Management Association. Mr. Burlowitz.
Yes. Well, after a long overdue process, we do have an agreement before the council. In my report, indicated that the current contract with BPMA, Bellevue Professional Managerial Association, actually expired in April of 2010. We began, under this administration, negotiations in October of 2011. It has been a lengthy process, but we've gotten to the point where, as the council knows, on March 19, we did submit a initial last best and final offer to the BPMA at that time, in April. They did reject it. However, we, in discussion of strategy with the council, wanted to take steps, if at all possible, to still reach an agreement without having to go into other mechanisms that, that resolve collective bargaining issues. So, in April, excuse me, in May, we, we did, and had a very active engagement with the BPMA negotiating committee. We did submit a package of non-economic resolutions or compromises, primarily had to do with language issues, some provisions that we felt we could reach an agreement, and ultimately, the BPMA on June 15, based upon that work that went on during May and early June, voted to ratify the agreement. I know Mr. Delaney is here representing the BPMA. I would ask, Steve, though, that I would like to have Mark McQueen, who represents the city negotiation team, at least give a little introduction, and then obviously, the BPMA would be able to also comment upon it. But since we're, we're actually bringing the contract forward to the council, I would like to have Mark kind of, without being too redundant with what I've covered, be able to provide also some light on where we've been and where we're at.
Good evening. Mark McQueen, worked with the law firm Barrett Home, acted as the city's negotiator through this process, not the entire process, but I came in roughly 2013. Short summary is, we had multiple open issues. The last time we had a chance to talk with you, we submitted a final offer in order to resolve those issues. BPMA rejected that offer, as Mr. Burlowitz has indicated, and through some conversations between the lead negotiators for, through both parties, and as a result of some of the strategy that we had resolved upon following our last discussion with city council, came up with compromises. Those compromises eliminated all the language issues. BPMA voted on those issues and accepted the economic offer. So, we're in a position today to finally put this matter behind us. I think Mr. Delaney is here to give you his perspective on, on the outcome of that vote, but I'll be happy to answer any questions, or go into as much detail as you'd like, or as little detail as you'd like, on the issues that we resolved since the last time we spoke.
Are there any questions for Mr. McQueen? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Steve Delaney. I'm one of the negotiators for the BPMA. I want to thank the council for giving us another chance to try and work out the differences that we had when the initial vote was taken regarding the last best and final offer that was put forth by the city. We, we have reached an agreement as it relates to the final contract. The, the reason that I'm here is because there are two, two employees who are not necessarily addressed in this contract. We have Jody Van Houten, who is in the back here, who's the executive aide to the chief of police, and we have Karen Idemiller, who is not here tonight. Oh, Miss Karen. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see Karen come in. The reason that these individuals are here, and the reason that I'm here, is because the, the agreement that we ratified, it, it addresses everyone except these two individuals, and these two individuals, according to this contract, don't receive any raise. Now, and, and when I say raise, they don't receive any boost to their income. The last time that they had any sort of increase was in 2009. Now, six years is a long time. I, I was just, I was pulling out some facts earlier today, and just to show the difference between 2009 and the present. In 2009, the Dow Jones was $9,171. The average house was $232,000, whereas now it's $420,000. The average cost of college tuition was $6,585 as compared to $9,139. Now, there's also been 10.4% inflation since that time. If these individuals don't receive any sort of an increase, then we're going to have six years of nothing. Now, what I'm asking the council to do is to vote on this contract and to add to the existing contract a pay raise for these two individuals. The average is about nine percent in the contract. I would ask that the city do that. And, and these aren't just employees who've been here for one, two, three, four years. Jody Van Houten has been an employee with the city for almost twenty years. Karen Idemiller, she will celebrate thirty years with the city this year. So, we have two individuals with fifty years of combined service, not unemployment, but service to this city, who I think are deserving of a pay raise, a boost to their salary to help keep up with the inflation, to help keep up the increased costs of food, rent, shelter, tuition, clothing, things for children. And, and I would ask that you include an increase for these two individuals when you vote on the contract.
Mr. Burlowitz.
Yeah, I'd like to respond to that. I probably have Mr. McQueen also. I have the other negotiation staff here. One of the things you need to realize, that in these contracts, the wages, the wage lines have nothing to do with the individual in that position. They have to do with the job, what the responsibilities of the job are, and how they compare with other comparables in our market. And what I mean by comparables, the state legislature, state Nebraska, requires the city of the first class to provide similar and comparable wages, working conditions. As you know, the CIR has a set of guidelines. The city in 2013 spent $30,000, went out and did a very comprehensive comparability study. The purpose of that was it not been done, at least for a considerable amount of time, and it also provided the basis that the city has used over the last year to negotiate contracts with four other unions. BPMA is the fifth union. Our intent was to bring the city as close as we could into compliance with comparability, because that is, that is the law. And, and that's, in our negotiations with the other unions, that is the, the strategy, that is the position that we took to not only be comparable, but to be consistent. The positions that, that are being identified, it's true. In the, in this contract, they would not be adjusted. What we're talking about, though, is the fact that what are the, the bottom and the top range for a position? Has nothing to do with the person, how many years of service. The years of service, or basically, used to be, that's how you advanced in your pay line. And we had employees, and, and I can only speak to, I don't know if I have it in front of me. I can only speak, for instance, for some of the issues, that they have moved in terms of their terms of their steps based upon longevity. The other element, so we sought to be comparable, we sought to be consistent. I will tell you that because of concern over these positions we're talking about, I had HR go out and actually get current data from the cities we use that would meet the CIR guidelines for comparability, and the positions still do not, ranges do not warrant an increase. It has nothing to do with the person in those position or their performance. They are still considerably above market. They have been above market for the last five years. If this was a CIR issue, CIR basically holds the ability to raise wage ranges and reduce wage ranges. And if this were to go to the CIR, there's always a possibility that could happen. I'm not telling, contexturing, but that's basically what they look at. The one thing that in agreeing to bring this proposal forward, and that was voted on, is that I agreed that the, all the positions in the BPMA would be retroactively eligible for performance raises or performance bonuses. The agreement's just up tonight for ratification. If we wouldn't have, if we were not agreeing, and it was not in the proposal, those individuals would have not been eligible for performance raise. Now, remember, one of the key elements in all of our negotiations, all of our contracts, was to move to performance management as a basis for pay adjustment. Employees advance in their wage lines based upon their performance, no longer longevity. Employees that are maxed out, which we do have some employees, it's not just in this union, it's other unions as well. And I've already approved, under other contracts, since April 1, performance awards up to $1,500. And so employees under this agreement that would not necessarily be an adjustment in the ranges are, will be eligible back to April 1st for a performance step or a performance bonus. So to say that they're not being given any compensation, they clearly, based upon their evaluations that ran through March 31st, when everybody was evaluated for performance, they are eligible based upon that performance, once you ratify this, to go back and to retroactively provide those performance awards. To adjust these ranges is very, you might say it compromises the position and that we've taken with all the other unions and all the other unions that, for the unions that we have contracts with over the last year, had agreed to. Comparability. If we alter comparability tonight, we basically have undermined our credibility with those other unions. And if I was in those other unions, I'd be coming back and saying, gee, city. If you're willing to make additional here, what about the other unions? My whole point is about fairness and equity across the board for all of our unions. We have one contract yet to negotiate, and we're not that far off. So again, it has, it's not intended to slight these employees. It's not saying that they don't perform well. It's not saying we don't appreciate their loyalty and the years of service, but we're following comparability, and that is the law. And so the contract that was approved by the union reflects that on that. It took a long time, there were a lot of issues. The sooner we get it ratified, the better. You all know, this has been way too long, and we're, and we need to get this put to rest, move forward. And so that's why the contract was presented that way. I just wanted you to understand, again, the negotiation basis with all the unions, the basis for comparability, and also the fact that there was an agreement, a provision in this contract, if you look under that for performance bonus, that clearly says that back to April 1st, these individuals will be eligible for performance compensation. And I don't know, Mark, is there anything you'd like to add to that?
First thing I wanted to say is, we're not up here as a representative of the city or through Dan or through the negotiation process, making any comment about an individual's merit, an individual's, the sense of fairness in whether they should be given a pay increase or not. What we tried to do through this collective, rather than individual bargaining process, was to identify an objective source for measuring what a pay progression table should be. We hired an expert. The expert identified cities that are by definition comparable to the city, to the city of Bellevue. We, through that process, identified a pay progression table for each job classification, as Dan mentioned, without regard to individual employees. That's how we ended up with the proposal that we did. The last thing that we did, however, in an attempt to address those individuals who were already at the top wage rate, or would be under the terms of the contract, was to intentionally make them eligible for additional compensation in the form of performance bonus awards. So those individuals who top out, or had already topped out in the wage progression table, would be eligible, provided that their performance merited that. In response to the union's proposal, after we last talked with the city council, we agreed to make that performance bonus eligibility retroactive to April 1st in an attempt to ensure that anyone who was adversely impacted by our wage progression table would have that eligibility as quickly as anybody else in the county. So the only reason I share those details with you is I want the council to understand, we attempted in every way we could not to be retaliatory, not to be arbitrary, and to be well reasoned and objective in the proposals that we came up with.
And the only other thing I'd add is, in our negotiations with BPMA and the three other, four other unions that we've negotiated agreements with over the last year, plus going forward, every collective bargaining unit has the ability to go out and do a comparability study of their own, okay? Now, I have to say, none of the unions that we've reached agreements with have taken that step. Granted, they're expensive, but they have the ability to gather their own data, in which to state their case, argue their case. In this instance, BPMA nor any of the others have done so. The other element, too, is if you make an adjustment to a position that clearly is, the market does not show there is justification for it, next time we meet, we exacerbate the problem. The position then is even higher potentially, and so we run into it again. And so that only complicates it if you begin making changes to positions that don't warrant it based on comparability. And what do you do with those that aren't comparable? Do you add more onto theirs? So again, being consistent, not being arbitrary, being fair. This represents an agreement that is based upon that premise and those reasons.
Mr. Modery.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Burlowitz, for that explanation. I want to point out that also, we would affect other cities, their financial liabilities and their dealings on their union contracts, if we're picked for a comparability, a comparable unit that they compare against if we go above our, or change our maximum wage grade.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the negotiations. This has been long and drawn out and difficult and challenging for everybody, and I appreciate that we're at this point and that we still have two employees who I think are excellent employees. I've worked with both of them, but I can say particularly, Jody is excellent, but I have worked with Karen Iden-Miller, and she is an exceptional employee. When I look at quality employees, I would put her right at the top. In terms of me wanting to give them additional money, and do I think they earn it and deserve it, you bet I do, and I'll tell them privately and I'll say it publicly now and in the future. What concerns me in doing this, though, is we were at this very point with another union earlier, and we went back and changed some of the rules of the game at the 11th hour like this, and then it drug out longer, we had more problems, we had upset people in the union, we had upset people in the administration. I wasn't in the negotiations, and I know how difficult it was, and I don't want to try and second guess. I think we've got the comparables, and as much as I would like to give these employees who are very deserving additional funds, I'm glad that the performance base is backdated to April so they can get that. It isn't enough, in my view, however, to now, at this late a time, after the unions have ratified, after we've gotten so far, I feel between a rock and a hard place, but I've got to lean on the side of the administration and say, we need to approve the contract, but without an amendment.
Mr. Burlowitz.
I have one thing, and then I'm done. The other element I want to remind you, too, is when we moved to this performance management, it created an opportunity that did not exist previously. Prior to performance management and performance-based pay, employees that were topped out were topped out, okay? We've had employees for years that have been at the max, and until we were able to move their wage lines, they've just sat there. So they, even though they were performing well, performing above standard, they did not have the opportunity to earn a performance bonus on that. It's been a long time since there's been anything in place. Now, at one time, I know there were merit increases available at that, but I can tell you, for some period of time, there has not been the ability to be rewarded once you've topped out. There may have been a merit increase, but that was a long time ago, and so now, at least, people do have an opportunity that didn't exist previously, or at least for a considerable amount of time. Cities never had true performance-based management.
Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to make a motion to open it for a public hearing. We do have some employees and people here. I don't know if they want to speak, no one's asked, but I'd like to at least throw that out to make a motion for a public hearing on this item. I'll make that motion.
Need a second?
No, second.
Second by Mr. Modery. Any discussion? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. I'm now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time.
I guess it kind of puts me on the spot, doesn't it? I just want you to know that I really appreciate my job. I enjoy working with the police department. I work very hard, like Mr. Preister said. My only concern about the comparabilities is that they were actually compared to what I actually do. I realize that we updated my job description. I am not sure when they did the comparability study, but my job has many facets to it. It's not, I am not the chief secretary, which everyone seems to think that I am. I am more of a business manager. I do all the accounting, I do purchasing, I do the time clock, the payroll. I mean, I do just about everything that the officers don't do. But I just hope that when you did your comparabilities, because we didn't get to see the comparabilities, but I hope that they took that all into consideration. I realize that they felt that I was maxed out, and I realize Mr. Burlowitz says we have the ability to have the incentive pay, which was backdated to April, which my anniversary is January. So that doesn't include me. So once again, I don't end up with anything, anything until January. So just so that you know that, because he managed to say that it was available to April and not backdated to where I could benefit from it. So I just want you to know, though, that I love my job and, you know, I'm going to be here no matter what. So I just wanted you to know that I appreciate that you changed the wording in the contract, but, you know, I still would have liked to have had a little bit of a raise since everyone else in the city got around 8% of an increase. So, thank you.
Mr. Burlowitz.
And I would just address, and obviously Jody is an excellent employee, there's no doubt about that. Again, comparability doesn't fortunately look at people, and I would say a lot of, truthfully say, I think we have a lot of great employees. Every organization has their challenges, but we have good employees. I can assure you that when we did the comparability, one of the exercises you go through, first of all, is to review all the jobs. We do a job analysis, to make job descriptions, because for one thing, the analyst wants current comparables, because they actually go out to a city and sit down and they do position by position match. Now, under the new CIR regulation, it used to be 85% match, now it's a 70% match, so it's even a little more flexibility. But every job description that the city was in the comparability study, which was all full and part-time, did have a complete review, and it was, obviously, went through the process of HR and all signed off. So the intent was to make sure every job was current and truly reflected, because jobs do change. Responsibilities change, and so, and one of the things we do routinely now is, we routinely review all jobs, because they can, if you let them get out of sync, then there's a problem. But Jody's position, i.e. that position, along with every other job with the city, was updated to make sure it was current so it would provide a true ability for comparison with the other cities that were in the study. And fortunately, she did mention the January 1. I should have corrected that. The intent was to, our evaluation periods go up until this point, have been every six months, April to September, September to March. Fortunately, she's right in the middle, so that would, makes it very difficult when you have a halfway evaluation period. The April 1st, though, was agreed upon because that's when evaluations were completed as of March 31st, and the plan actually went into effect of giving performance step increases or bonuses April 1st. So we did, we did as best we could to roll it back to try to at least include them along with everybody else.
Thanks. Councilman Blood.
But for clarification, in January, when she is, it is time for her review, then she can potentially get a raise based on performance.
What we're switching, it used to be that we did every six months. Under the new personnel policy manual, which is one thing we're not amending, by the way, that is, employees are going to 12-month evaluation periods rather than six. So it'll go from basically April 1st through March of next year, obviously Jody, along with everyone else, and will be, well, they'll be eligible to earn step increases or performance bonuses.
The answer is yes.
Yes, the answer is yes, sorry.
Chuck Frederick, 1511 Madison Street. I guess my only question would be, did Jody have a chance to look at the job description that you gave to your group that studied them? Did she have a chance to look at her job description so she could, sounded like she has a lot more duties than what the job description was? Did she have the opportunity to look at that job description and tell all the things she did so then you could evaluate her better?
Mr. Frederick, when we do a job description update or analysis, it's done between, with the employee and their department head or supervisor, and before it ever comes to me, they both sign off on it. So that verifies it, in fact, they agree that it is current and accurate.
Are there others who would like to speak? We'll close the public hearing, were there wishes of the council?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, here's where I have an issue with this. We have two employees that are coming in front of us that have not had a pay increase for six years. And all the other unions that have come before us, the four previous ones, all their contracts expired within the last year, and some of them, we were within a month or two in approving the new one that is where we started with the feasibility study. So those four unions that involve the majority of our employees, we have this contract with 21 employees, and we have the police command with probably eight employees, are the only two remaining. We have two employees that are here tonight with 50 years of service and, total, and we are saying from 2009, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, you don't get a pay raise. a pay raise. All the other unions had active contracts. If we were doing three-year contracts, we would have done two contracts with them prior to the one that we're looking at tonight. So, all the police officers and everybody else, when they had a valid contract in nine, ten, and eleven, got pay raises. Then they negotiated another contract, and we went through twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, and got pay raises. And at this point, we are pulling the card of the feasibility study. And now, we're trying to make adjustments, and we're trying to move forward. You have two employees that, if we would have approved their contract in '09, and twelve, and I might be off, they would have gotten pay raises. We would have settled with them and given them one, two, three percent. And now, they're here, their union is saying eight percent. I'll guarantee you, if you looked at every union the last six years, eight percent would be probably the lowest and probably unheard of. So, let's get them to where they have missed out for six years of pay increases. And now, let's start and try to move and correct there, if we need to move forward from here, their wages. I don't know why.
Well, Paul, I got, go ahead.
Please finish. We sat here and have gone six years without negotiating a contract. In that time sense, we've created, I believe, one or two, a part-time union, and the full-time, part-time firefighters' union, and a full-time firefighters' union. They've gone to Lincoln, they got status as a union, we negotiated with them, we give them a contract, there's pay raises involved in it, and we just recently, within the last year, we approved the next three-year contract. That's not what happened here. We dropped the ball. This city dropped the ball by not negotiating at least two contracts over the last six years, where there would have been pay raises increased. So, I think it's, you talk about fairness and equitable, that's off the table. That's not here. We should have had two contracts negotiated with them, and now, we should have been working on the next three years. So, I don't know if I'll get any support, but I'm going to make an amendment. I think these two ladies are due this pay raise, deserve it, and we, the city, dropped the ball.
Mr. Burlowitz, please respond.
Well, I'll have to rebut that. We have negotiated contracts. And we've, and I don't really want to, I guess you might cast dispersions, but folks, you reached an agreement on both sides coming to terms. We have not been able to reach terms with the BPMA. Why is that? Why is that? When we've been able to negotiate two contracts with three unions, a new union and a part-time union, the city did not drop the ball. We have actively engaged since I've been here in 2011. Now, granted, the contract had not been, expired a year before I came here. Why wasn't it reached? Okay? So, we can look back at a prior administration. I wasn't here. We have actively engaged. Rich Severson's here, Karen Jackson is here, Ashley became involved, Mark McQueen's here. We have actively engaged, meeting after meeting after meeting. We've spent a tremendous amount of staff time and legal expenses to finally get this agreement. It's a two-way street. So, I do take offense to say the city dropped the ball. I would have loved, and my negotiating team would have loved to have a contract in six months. It's not fun negotiating, folks. And I've told the council before, if you want to begin negotiating contracts, you can negotiate them all. But you're going to have to quit your jobs, because it becomes a full-time job. I don't even, the value of the time of my top staff and myself and the city attorney and Mark McQueen is extensive. That money could have been put to better use, folks. I would have loved to have an agreement. And so, to say that we've dropped the ball, we have not dropped the ball. We reached out after we had a session with the council on a particular strategy. We didn't have to go there, did we? Because we reached out and we made compromises to reach an agreement. We reached out to make those compromises. Okay? And so, we worked through it. And we're having a contract, okay? We had a last, best and final offer all back and got rejected. So, we reached out. Now, granted, there's always friction along the way. You're trying to resolve issues. You're trying to reach a fair agreement on part of the employee. Our intent isn't to go in and cheat our employees. Our intent is to have good working condition and good wages. The fact that you're saying these people have gotten raises, people have gotten step increases along the way. What I'm saying is, the city is required by law to file comparability. That is what we're doing. Yes, we went out and got a study. God knows, I wish you would have done it when I came. Would have made it a lot easier on that, because we found wages were really out of whack on that. And so, yes, depending on the position in the market, some positions have gotten raises in the other unions. Some have gotten two and a half percent, okay? But it's based upon comparability. It's based upon hard data. So, the fact, yes, it's been that long. And boy, I would have loved to have had agreement back in 2012, when we got all the other contracts negotiated. We wouldn't have spent all this time. We would just be entering on that. And so, no, I mean, we have not dropped the ball. We've met, I don't, I mean, I got a record of it. We've met and met and met. We've had council members sit in on meetings on that. So, this agreement is, we are trying to be fair. We're trying to make adjustments that are comparable and fair to our taxpayers. Mr. Modery makes a good point. Comparability is the bane of every city, first-class city, because every time you raise your rates, they raise theirs. And it's a spiral effect. Unfortunately, it's the law. And we can't get the legislature to give us any relief from it. We're held to it. But we're not robbing two employees out of compensation. What we're doing is, we went through and we said, let's make sure people are properly slotted in the market, so they are properly compensated. And again, performance management, so we can reward good performance. Not mediocre performance, but good performance. Because of limited resources we have, and folks, we're getting into another budget, and it's not all roses, I can tell you that. And it never is, because we've negotiated new contracts we have to pay for now on that. But our intent is to be fair to our employees, to be defensible. If we had to go to Lincoln, we would have went to Lincoln. Nobody wanted to go to Lincoln, did we, on that? But we felt confident, based upon the data, based upon the experts that did the study. So, this is not intended to be unfair to two employees. I'm not, we've said they're not great employees. They worked hard, they work hard. Again, that's where the performance base comes into play. So, I guess, Paul, I have to disagree that the city has dropped the ball. I guess, if we dropped the ball, then we both dropped the ball, because it's a two-sided coin.
Mayor, and Dad, I'm not blaming you. I'm just saying that you probably, the first couple of years, you probably weren't even here.
Well, I was here since 2011, so that's, that's four out of the five years.
What I'm saying is, just collectively, I feel that the city should have moved forward and got this contract resolved quicker. And I realize that there was probably times where on both sides, people had requested maybe delays in things and put things back. I'm simply trying to present a situation that, that all the other employees had contracts that were approved over the last six years that included pay raises. And had we had done this with this contract, with this union, they would have, over the last five or six years, also gotten pay raises. And then, we would treat them the same way we have the other four unions, where we have agreed to contracts of saying, okay, from this point forward, we're going to try to make the proper adjustments to get us to where we need to be within the feasibility study. I feel like they're being punished by the lack of an agreement being made. And I'm not putting it on your shoulder. I take blame for it, too. I'm just saying that I think it's fair to say, had we resolved contracts over the last six years, these employees, along with the other employees in this union, would have had pay raises. And then, we would be here today, looking at, maybe extending something that expired in fourteen or fifteen, and saying, now, we're going to make the adjustments to move forward. That's the only thing I'm saying.
Yeah, and I've just, in one last remark, and Paul, I don't disagree. The thing that's frustrated me personally, in my position, is the point you just made. If we would have reached a contract four years ago, people would have got pay adjustments. To me, that's the worst part of the fact that this has taken so long. Okay? It does. I've told my staff that on that. I said, I feel bad for the members of the union who haven't had a contract that would have. But you know, I couldn't force them to agree to a contract. I would have loved to have a contract in place, so there would have been adjustments in place. But again, it takes two to tango on that. Both sides have to come to an agreement. And it's, and at least now, we've finally reached an agreement on that. It really is unfortunate that it took this long. It really is. Because again, of all the time involved, and also the impact upon the people who did not have a contract. But again, we negotiated multiple contracts with other unions, because they would come to the table, and we got to a finish line. We could not do that with the BPMA up until this date. And so, we have done everything we could. And true, yeah, it's unfortunate on that. But, you know, again, there's two pieces to that puzzle.
Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I've known and worked with both of these young ladies for thirty years. And they're fine individuals, they're outstanding employees. I was in the same bargaining unit as them for twenty-five years. And I'm going to tell you that I have never been in a negotiation where a hundred percent of everyone is satisfied when you go through a negotiation. It just doesn't happen that way. That being said, as we moved through this whole process, I was furious that we had gone six years without a contract. And I think all of us were frustrated with that. And we moved, and we moved, and we moved. And finally, we had a vote that came back, and they denied the last and final offer, last best and final offer of the city. And if I may divulge, I'm going to say it anyway. Our direction was to go to the CIR. And there could be no resolution to that issue. I applaud both the BPMA, and I applaud the city administration and the negotiation team for going back on their own and trying to hammer out a deal, so that we could get closure on this and move forward. I didn't know that they were doing that. I thought we were going to go to the CIR, and I was prepared for that move. We have two individuals that I have great respect for and admiration, both as individuals and as employees, that probably are not going to get a raise, because of some function of how this negotiation went. And I feel terrible for them. I really do. I think they deserve a raise. But I'm not going to sacrifice the remainder of that union, because two people don't get a raise. I can't do that to the rest of them. And that's just how I feel about this.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan.
On behalf of my law office, as well as on behalf of Mark, I think we would take exception to dropping the ball as well. I've had four attorneys, including myself, working on this case all the way back to when Troutman was in place. And I've never had any more complaints than we've had with this particular union, every time somebody would come back and trying to get something resolved, and the timeframe that it took. There was no ball getting dropped by the city administration, or in particular, the attorneys that were involved with that. And I'm sorry, Mark, if I'm speaking on your behalf. But that just absolutely did not happen. In the delay of these six years, it would have shown that those particular positions were paid more than what was comparable during that entire six years. So, those positions actually benefited from a contract being delayed six years, not lost. And it, be kept in mind, percentages of increases mean nothing in public pay. Comparability is what we measure things. So, somebody comes to me and says, well, Papillion gave a five percent raise, and you guys are giving two percent raises. That means absolutely nothing to me whatsoever. What it means is, how is the job of Papillion getting paid in comparability to the job in Bellevue, or whatever other city that we're using as comparisons? Percentages mean absolutely nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. What are the wishes of the council? Did I close the public hearing? I'll repeat myself. The public hearing is closed, unless there's anyone else that would like, is there anyone else who would like to speak? I'll close the public hearing.
We need a motion before an amendment is made.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve and ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Bellevue and the Bellevue Professional Management Association, known as BPMA.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. Mr. Cook.
I'd like to make a motion for an amendment to this approval and ratification, that the Public Works Administrative Secretary and the Executive aide to the Chief of Police receive a nine percent pay increase.
Motion fails. We need to vote on the motion. We don't have a second, so does the motion fail.
That fails, yeah. So, it's just the motion, the original motion.
So, we go to the original motion. And we got a second on that by Mr. Preister. Okay? Please vote.
Vote is five to one.
Thank you. Item 12J, approval of the revisions of the employee handbook. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve.
I need a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
The vote is five to one.
Thank you. Item 11, city administrators' report. Comments will be limited to the items on the current city administrators' report.
Well, you've probably been tired of listening to me talk too much tonight, so, as usual, I'll just entertain. Carol, actually, agreeing with me. And I'd have to agree with you, too. Staff will entertain any questions the council has on either my portion of the report or my staff.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one comment. We are charged with updating our council policies this year. And to my knowledge, on the council committee that looks at these, only one that Councilwoman Cook and I have worked on, which is Policy Resolution 16, which doesn't exist now, creating the task force that already exists, needs to be implemented. And some discussion has gone through over the last month or two, but I'm just looking at how we proceed. I don't think we've gotten any input from any other council members on any of the other policy changes. So, if anybody has any, I guess, send them forward. If not, I just am looking at when we put this on an upcoming agenda to vote one way or the other on at least Policy 16, which currently doesn't exist, and yet, we're functioning as though it did.
Yeah, actually, we discussed that this morning. We'll probably just put out one more reminder for an opportunity, like, just a short period of time, just to make sure everybody has reviewed either what exists or doesn't exist. But please, if there's, and again, it's your policy. So, if there's policies that need to be revised, or be considered for revision at least, or added, deleted, whatever, that's why this process occurs. So, I want to make sure everybody takes the time, so we're confident that, in fact, we don't have something that's hanging out there.
Mr. Modery.
Thank you, Mayor. In the city administrator report, Mr. Schutuck's portion, Chris, it says you and Tammy met with Lockwood Development on the Coors Lab properties. Is there anything you can share there?
They are working on both the upper and the lower sites. They, I believe they do have a developer for the lower site, somebody to take most of that site and redevelop that. And then, also, the upper site, they, I know they have one of the lots under contract. And they've got designs and two smaller buildings ready to get, I won't say ready to go, but planned with a number of tenants for that area as well. They are currently looking for kind of a, I won't say big box, it's not a big enough site for the big box, but I'll say the medium-sized box for the back part of that upper site. I had hoped we'd have something in from them for the lower site. It would require a zoning change and a plat to replat the existing lots. I was hoping we'd have that in for the July planning commission, but our deadline was last Friday. last Friday, and we did not get anything. But I do believe that they are still moving forward with that.
Okay, okay, so that should be coming further.
Hopefully coming soon, yes.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Moving on to item number 14, public requests to be heard. Any member of the public address in the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution Number 35 regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states, "Any statements made during the city council meetings by the mayor, members of the city council, city officials, and employees, or members of the general public shall not involve personal, impertinent, or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless of whether the individual so attacked is an elected official, a city official, or an employee or member of the general public in City Code Section 2-68 regarding the manners of addressing the council. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted outside the council chambers. Speakers shall limit their presentation to five minutes."
Chuck Frederick, 1511 Madison Street. I try not to take too long because I want to go watch the College World Series probably like you guys do. You know, I've spoken over 160 times to city council here, and I've given quite a few suggestions, recommendations. You did follow one, you got rid of the pre-council meeting, so I thank you for that. But there are three areas that I've talked about, I think is very important, we get on the agenda as quick as possible. I'm going to ask all of you to put it on the agenda. I will be calling some of you individually to do this. The one is the state audit. There's no reason we can't have the state auditor do the audit. We just skip the normal auditors for one year, no extra costs. My question is, why is anybody, why is everybody afraid to have the state come down and do the audit? To me, let's find out how it's run, how the city is run. The other one is the at-large position. I think there should be something on the agenda soon to eliminate that position. When Councilwoman Blood was running for state senate, she said on record here that she thought the position should be eliminated. So, I think it's time to bring that up and discuss that and talk about that. The other one is the monthly balance sheet. I've been talking about that for a long time, and I think it's time to bring that up on the agenda, too, and talk about that because there certainly is wonderment why our city doesn't do the monthly balance sheet. The other thing, on May 27th of the Bellevue leader, Ron Pitox, who does, gives letters for certain individuals, certain groups, gave Mary Sanders an F for not speaking up about the city ministers' contract, and maybe she should have, but I'm a defender because I think she has stood up, and I can give you three examples of what she has stood up. One was, they were all at the mayor's debate we had last fall. I suggested that we start looking at Papillion as a way to emulate some of the things they do to make our city run better, and she recommended I move to Papillion. Well, I'm still here, but I think a lot of people have moved to Papillion and a lot of businesses have come here because of what they're doing at Papillion. The other one is that, at that debate, I also talked about the monthly balance sheet, and she, Mary Sanders, stated that the monthly balance sheet and the monthly financials are the same. Well, they're not. Anybody who's in business or owns a business knows that a monthly balance sheet is one page, the financials can be five, 10, 15 pages long. And the other time was when I spoke, at that debate, I said that people should look at my website, chuckfrederick.com. I would like to have that on the minutes because it has been on the minutes before, and she indicated, she told people not to look at my website. All the more reason to look at it. So, thank you very much for the time, and I'm off to watch the game.
Also, want to, Luke Taylor, Burt Murphy Boulevard in Bellevue, Nebraska. We've got a lighter note, too. I appreciate the effort put into fixing the streetlight situation. I think it's a good opportunity to do some different things, especially in areas of development that are new development. There's been some things in the newspaper about the cell phone tower situation, or by pilgrims landing, I believe, because of lack of cell phone coverage, and some people are kind of, you know, bothered by new cell phone towers, and I think the, having like some smart streetlights may also provide a solution there, possibly. Thank you.
Are there others that would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public request to be heard. Item number 15, executive session. Councilwoman Blood.
For the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individual, I move to go into an executive session to discuss the lease agreement with BAE.
Second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion? See none? Please vote.
Although, yes.
Thank you. It is now 8:20 PM. We go into executive session on discussion, and we're restricted to what is stated in the motion.